Thought we were waiting to 9:01.
Well, it is.
Okay.
All right. Bannock County Commissioners are now in session. Our first items are ambulance items.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we enter into the Board of Ambulance.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the accounts payable, we have some refunds, reimbursements, yes, not refunds, reimbursements. And while we're in the Board of Ambulance, we have grants that we're going to talk about. Nancy, Chief?
Yep, Chief is here. I'll just let him take it over.
Oh, thanks, Nancy. Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan O'Hearn, Bannock County EMS District. We're here to ask for acceptance of the Idaho EMS Save Grant. We were awarded $16,000 when we applied for this grant earlier this year. It's to purchase a Lucas chest compression device. It's a mechanical device that we use to provide chest compression during CPR. The cost of the device and the care plan is $25,920.38. The grant will cover $16,000 of that, and that leaves a match for the district for $9,920.38. So today, we're just asking for authorization to accept the grant, appropriate funds, and approval to sign the PO. We have to send the grant paperwork back to Department of Health and Welfare. They execute it, send us back the paperwork, and then we can bring the PO to you to sign. We're hoping to get that done in January because there is going to be a price increase on this piece of equipment on February 1st, and so we're going to ask the state to expedite the approval process.
Okay.
And then we were hoping, when we have to bring that PO back, that we could just bring it back as a signature only, just for the sake of time, because it's already been discussed and approved.
We budgeted nine.
There is money in the capital to cover it, because we underbudgeted, well, we overbudgeted, I mean, for some capital items, so there's sufficient funds.
Okay. We started getting these units a couple of years back.
We did. We bought-
How are they, and do we have them in any ambulances now?
We do. We do. We have them on all six ambulances in the district, in South County and in North County. And to be honest, they're game changers for cardiac arrest management. They, not only do they provide more consistent depth and rate of compressions, which leads to greater patient outcomes, but they reduce fatigue. And on the provider, when we're transporting patients on a cot or in the back of the ambulance, these devices are able to stay running, whereas before, we had to have a provider standing in the back of a moving ambulance or walking alongside the cot. It's just not as effective. So they've been invaluable, and I think you'll see, that's why they're getting awarded for grants, and they're going to be pretty common as a standard of care in EMS.
This grant does require that we keep the, they have an interest on the grant for five years. Somewhat of that, when we buy an ambulance, we have to keep it for five years. You can't get rid of it. Same thing with this device.
Is the life expectancy at least greater than five years?
Yes.
Okay.
And that shouldn't be a problem. We're just, as practice for grants, we're going to start documenting that so that we have a better paper trail when we put the asset in, that we have documentation, that there is an interest or not.
Great.
So I just mentioned it for that purpose.
Any further questions?
No. Good job. Mr. Chair, I would move that we authorize grant acceptance and also authorize signature, what did you say?
We'll bring it back as an agenda item, but we're just going to list it as a signature only.
Okay.
So there's no presentation on it.
Okay, so then authorize signature when it comes back.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks.
Do you want to take this down to Christie?
Sure.
Or I can just take it and give it to Mandy, and then we'll just route it.
That'd be better. That way, you've got your-
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we exit the Board of Ambulance.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item on our agenda is Commissioners' invoices, question report, and credit applications. I don't have additional questions today on that one. This is a credit application, and it's just a name change.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the invoices and the credit application as presented.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have salary rate approval forms. The company changes for some reason.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the salary approval forms as presented.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
End that portion, and we go into our business portion, work session portion. And Nancy, you're up again.
Miss Naris, we were awarded another grant from the Idaho EMS Save Grant for search and rescue, for some extra patient equipment. The remainder of the balance, I don't know what the call of this right now, was budgeted for, so it's $472, is what it was.
Okay.
That's a big match.
Questions?
Nope. Mr. Chair, I'd move that we accept the grant for the Sheriff's Department's search and rescue.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Ryan.
Ryan Bellup, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. As you see on the work request form, there are some empty, big revolving cabinets that we've tried to send a message out, see if anybody wants them, and we haven't heard any reply, so I'm going through the process for requesting that they get removed and disposed.
Any comments on this, Dan?
I reached out to see if maybe Valley could sell them, and they said it's kind of an antique item, and didn't know anybody would want them, and they wanted $500 to take them apart. So I thought we would just go ahead and take them apart, and then either recycle them or probably the best way would be to recycle them. If I signed and took them apart, it'd be tough to get them back together.
Okay. Now, so that was my question. Are we trying to go to recycle, or are we just want to go to auction or whatever? Recycle is the best and easiest?
Yeah. They're big old things.
But as I stated to you before, that doesn't mean that the open space just gets chosen by anybody or everybody that wants more space.
Okay, yeah. Well, my department doesn't need it anymore, so I defer to you and whoever to use that, how you feel.
Not whoever, you defer to us. Any questions?
Nope. Mr. Chair, I'd move that we authorize disposal of the filing cabinets.
Motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two items on the agenda. The first item is, we received an invoice for the architectural services for Sixth Street and the entryway right here. The Commission had approved $20,000 in ARPA funds for architecture fees and engineering. The invoice I received for just the architecture is $22,405. So I need approval to go ahead and pay this from ARPA, and then I have no idea what the engineering costs are going to be. We do have the extra $2,405.50 in ARPA, because we had something else coming under, so we should still be able to absorb that with them.
And this project for ARPA, what was the total that we put into it? Do you remember?
A million.
Yeah. I mean, we have funds available for this project.
Yes, but the reason I bring it before you is because you've only approved $20,000 for this piece. So I'll probably be bringing back the engineering part unless you just want to also authorize me to pay it regardless of what it is. I mean, I'm not going to pay it on my code and get it to you, but-
We might as well.
Yeah.
It's already-
It's been okay as a project, so.
All right. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we authorize payment on the invoice as discussed, and also authorize payment of the engineering invoice when it comes in.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next item-
Do you want a signature on this, or you give it to us?
If you want to sign it, then yes, then I'll code it.
Who's the project manager?
Hal was doing the engineering and architectural. I think he was coordinating that. Is that correct?
And we met last, well, it was before Christmas, wasn't it? So it's a couple of weeks ago, we met with the engineer and the architect and gave them some thoughts and plans. I met with Dan and them.
So who is the, so someone is talking to the firms that are doing this work, and there should be some-
Hal has been.
Some oversight of how much money they're going to spend before they actually spend it, I assume.
Yes.
Hal knew, Hal's the one that gave us the estimate of $20,000, but my understanding is the architect and the engineer had to come back for a second visit, so that's probably why it cost us a little bit more. I don't know that for a fact, but-
The original plans were sent back a couple of times.
So that's probably, yeah.
Well, I just want to make sure we have someone from the county who's watching this, talking to them, we're not just getting, they're not just doing whatever they want in those invoices.
No. We had this discussion the other day, how it was going on.
The next item I have for the board is a, hopefully, approval of Tyler Technologies. We've been involved with what they consider a PACE program, which basically gives us remote training sessions. We had this last year. They gave us 12 sessions. It also pays for our annual training to go to Tyler, and we've discounted, or we've cut this back to only six days instead of 12. But the Tyler training is $1,100 per person. That's included in here, and we send three people, so it's a good deal. If you've got any questions, plus, as things come up, we can utilize these trainings to get clarification until we are more comfortable with the software.
Talking about more comfortable, how are you feeling? How's things going?
Depends on the topic. For everyday functioning, it's good. I'm still struggling with some year-end things. Our fixed assets aren't rolling smoothly. They weren't set up correctly. We're trying to get that fixed. That's causing some hiccups for me to be able to do a true trial balance, and it's causing us to be out of balance. So I'm going to have to move our trial balance into itself and use it that way, like I had to last year, but at least we know why. So there's plenty of hiccups. I'm not 100% optimistic that we'll have financials done in March, like my goal.
I have confidence.
See how much extra time I can dedicate. But these trainings do benefit. They allow us, when we have problems like this, with these fixed assets, we're going to be able to do a day of training and have someone work with us to get them fixed, so.
What's the investment assessment?
That's not hopeful. You only get one of these every three years. They come in and look at how we're set up and tell us if there's a better way to do things.
Oh, okay.
I was very optimistic about that. When we had it done last year, I was not impressed with the results.
So it's just kind of like the audit to see how the software's working for you, what holes they need to try to fix?
That's what they say is, it's not.
Okay. Okay. I was just, so this PACE 6, that's your training, the remote trainings, and the assessment is, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And we will be registered, like I said, for the annual software. That training is beneficial, because you actually get to meet with people, and you have a onsite, they call it the hub, where you go meet with trainers or consultants, and you can take them problems and they'll work through some of those with you. It was very beneficial last year, so it should be helpful this year as well.
Cool.
Questions?
Motion. Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the Tyler remote training contract as presented and discussed.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was anticipated in the budget. Forgot to mention that.
Jason.
Ryan.
Ashley.
Ashley's got a full schedule of counseling today, and so she asked me to cover for her. Good morning, how are you?
Good.
For the record, Jason DiTratto, Court Administrator. We're here with cleaning budget. We had two different bids, one from Night Owl Janitorial for $520 per month, and one from Versatile Cleaning for $500 per month. We came previously, and the Commission asked us to get both of those bids, and since Versatile came in at $500 per month, we're recommending that you consider signing that contract with Versatile.
I saw Ashley this morning and asked her if she'd been involved in any of this. Go ahead.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been involved in the discussion, so.
So any contracts, any cleaning, stuff like that? Ashley actually oversees the county facilities, so I'd just like her to be involved. I've looked over the contracts, and like I say, there's a little difference between the two, so we'll go with Versatile.
Yeah, so what I'll do is, what I do with Night Owl is I communicate with the owner. He communicates with his cleaning staff, and then I also go between the county employees and offices. And so if they have complaints or issues, I go to the owner. He relates that to his staff, and so I'd just probably be doing the same thing with this other company, and then just, yeah, getting any questions or concerns from the employees there, and then I'll deal with him directly so that these six employees won't have to.
So if you just include Ashley in the conversations and stuff, if there's problems and concerns, you need to be aware of it, and then she has direct communication through Dan with us and stuff.
Just clarification, so in the future, I talked to Dan a little bit about the contract, but I should bring Ashley in as well to, or is she just going to be our point of contact with the-
Well, that's how we do all the others. Dan, how do you want to do it?
As far as you want to communicate directly with Ashley, she'll take care of whatever problems you have.
That's awesome.
I will do my best.
I just want to alleviate lots of different layers and just, everybody kind of follows the same pattern.
That's great. Yeah, we want to follow into that, too.
That's all.
And this is a new vendor, so I need to W9.
Okay.
Any questions? Comments?
Nope. Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the contract with Versatile Cleaning as presented.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Shanda.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shanda Kristal, Chief of Care and Officer. I've got two items before the board today. Let's see. Kim Talbot was supposed to join me, but I, she must have gotten hung up on something this morning as well. But in regards to going out to bid for the family specialist services, we did a request for proposal, and while the project is anticipated to be well under bid limits, we wanted to make sure that we were open and let all providers notice that we were going out for bid for this, and that they had the opportunity to participate if they so desired, right? If they felt that they could do the things that we needed them to do. So we did go out to bid for this, and we did receive one proposal. The evaluation that Kim put together was fantastic. They had a great cross-section of people that would see the individuals on the judge level. We had a judge participate for the first time, and so that was fantastic. And then we had different levels of end-users and beginning program managers as well. And so she put together a great evaluation team, and that being completed, I would recommend that the board award the bid for our family specialist services to Cognitive Restructuring. If the board has any questions?
Questions?
Nope.
I do have a letter prepared, if the board would so like to.
Motion to accept this and sign the letter.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we accept the bid from Cognitive Restructuring LLC and move forward with the contract.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that fell within the budget that was upped, right?
Yes, ma'am. It will not go over, what, 53 to 50, I think, I think. But the one that was specific as far as the per-hour rate, and they were spot on with that, they won't go over that. And then the per-class rate, we did not give a max, but it is under the same value, and it's, they can't go over what's, so we should be good to go, but Kim's really pretty good at watching.
I just, that grant's specific, you can't DBA much on, much of dollars.
Right. So, and we do have that contract, has been through legal already, with those specifications in there as far as the limits go, so that will go out to the company now, as they review if they have any changes or anything, but we anticipate that coming to the board in the next couple of weeks for final review and signature. As far as a procurement update goes, I would like to start with the public work guardrails. We had reached out to ITD. They had just awarded a contract to a company, and we would have liked to piggyback off of it. Though, once we got the contract and reviewed, it is substantially higher than a recent smaller project that we just did, so I haven't confirmed with Buddy, but having that information now, I feel that we'll just go out to bid for it and see if we can't get a better price for Bannock County. In regards to the Lava Ranches contractor that we're looking for, we are waiting for comments back from BLM, but once those are received, and we do anticipate submitting those back to the state on Monday for final review. In regards to the road and bridge fuel for the county, those have been published, and we have a couple of contractors that have already reached out in interest, so we're excited for that, and questions are due on that proposal within the next couple of weeks. And the final one, I touched base with the board over Christmas break about the detention center roof and some hangups that we had had there. I contacted Levi, and he said the Contract West was out over the Christmas break to finish up the punch list items that we had left to do, but we do, we are now waiting for the manufacturer's visit to confirm that all that's complete before they'll release that warranty to us, but he anticipates that in the next couple of weeks, but I'll follow up and see if we can't get that one finally done and put to bed. But if there's any other questions or concerns?
Questions? Comments?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anita. And Tina.
Mr. Spencer's here, too.
This is not a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. So there's no additional comments?
Okay. Fine. So we have a $22,000, $22,000, a $22, 2022 market value that is being, that we put on the books, and we do have paperwork here if you'd like to see it. We went out to a building, Mr. Spencer's building on First Street, I believe, and the outside of the building had been renovated, or not renovated, but had been repainted and fixed up, and we did not get into the building, and so the outside of the building, we kind of made a judgment call from the outside of the building. And Mr. Spencer, the owner, did come in in December when he got his tax notice. We didn't feel at that point that we had made an error, but he says, and I'm not saying he didn't say it, but he says he came in in June and handed a paper to one of our staff members. I don't have any proof of it, but however, I'm certainly not saying he didn't. So we're kind of in a conundrum there, but, and we have no, usually we write people down as they come in or, you know, want to talk to somebody, and we don't have any proof of that. However, in the last couple of days, we've delved really deep into this appraisal, and we honestly did find some errors. And so the value went, in 2021, the value was $211,260. In the '22 appraisal, it went to $675,647. And since then, our commercial appraiser has gone back out to the building with the owner and has dropped the value, dropped the value for 2023 to $277,871. And what I am going to propose today, and because it's a 2022 value, and it'll be always passed for two years, I would like to, because we did find some errors, make a letter cancellation.
Comments?
I just was going to say, he's been into my office numerous times with his taxes and asking questions, and I just feel like he has made many efforts to have this known.
But the process to do this is to come to BOE.
Right.
And he never did apply during BOE.
That we can find, no.
He shook his head no, too, so. So tell me-
And his taxes are delinquent now.
What's that?
His taxes are delinquent.
Delinquent?
He hasn't paid them until he received an answer from the county.
Questions?
No, yes. So you're looking for a tax what?
A tax cancellation.
What's the amount?
I'm sorry?
How much is, how much are you looking for?
The market value we would be canceling is $397,776, which equates to approximately $4,859 in taxes.
And that's due for 20, that's due for 2023?
We would bring it back to the 2023 value, is what we-
So he hasn't paid since 2022?
He did not pay his 2022 taxes because he was disputing the value.
And did he pay the 2023?
No, because he can't until the 2022 is approved.
Okay. All right. So if we, if we agree to the $48.59, is that correct? If we agree to that, that would reset his value for 2023, that he can come in and pay So-
He would still have taxes owing for 2022, just not as much, correct?
Right, right. He still would have taxes, but not as much.
So the total owed for 2022 is what? Given the error, what's the total that we billed him for?
I think the taxes were, thank you. The original taxes were $8,254, and so we would be canceling $48.59, and so I hope you guys do better math than I do.
So $33.95?
Yeah.
And then that would be roughly what he's due for 2023?
I think 2023's are a little less because of the, because of the tax credits.
Yeah.
And a different levy.
And a different levy, yes, thank you.
Do we know what that number is? Because I'm assuming we would do both at the same time?
Yes, we did. So in 2023, his taxes are $3,143.42.
$3,143?
And 42 cents, yes.
That's Randy Hobson, Chief Deputy Assessor. That's the straight tax amount. That doesn't include the landfill and the tax credit.
Okay, well, and what was he billed in 2023?
So 2023, he would be, or he was billed $3,258.92.
So that's $115, if my math is close to correct. So theoretically, if we do this today, we would forgive, or do the cancellation of the 2022 for $48.59, forgive the 115, that's a question mark, for the 2023, to bring it to the proper amount and go from there. Leave the landfill fees in, and that, is that-
Well, 2023 value is correct, right?
Right. 2023 value is correct.
I thought you said it was- I thought you said it was, you said he was billed thirty-two fifty-eight, but it was supposed to be thirty-one forty-three.
No, I can't read his.
The difference there is basically the landfill and the.
Oh, so that, that is correct.
So there's not a question on the.
Fifty-eight, okay.
There's not a question on the twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
Too much information, I guess.
No, I'm just trying to make sure I got it right.
Mr. Spencer, would you come up here for a minute, please? So, I guess my first question is, how come you didn't come up during B O E when the taxes were first put on?
I, I dropped the paperwork up at the wrong spot. We were next door, not up here, is how that happened. And when I came down the first time, it was well after June. And they, they informed me that I dropped off to the wrong spot. And that's when we started conversations and took over the building. And this has been going on really since then, your, yeah.
Okay. I just, if you made an effort, I'm willing to work with you.
Yeah.
If, if two years later.
Oh, no, I didn't come. I've paid all my other property taxes. I've been trying to pay this and I just can't get resolution, so.
I feel that he's made many efforts.
Okay. We've accepted the responsibility for it. It is. I.
What's the penalties and interest?
I'm sorry, I'm not prepared for that.
Okay.
What is it?
Um, what was the amount for twenty-twenty-two?
Twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, and today I'll walk down the hall.
You're good.
What was the amount of taxes after the cancellation for twenty-twenty-two?
Thirty-three ninety-five.
Yeah, we helped it. It was thirty.
Approximately thirty-five hundred?
Where are you going?
If he'll pay it today, we'll make that, we'll waive the penalties and interest because we've accepted the responsibility. It was our fault. And it's taken him a year to get it figured out, so. Do you have a number for me?
Aye. We would do a resolution anyway. If you want to make a motion, she can get me the numbers so I can do the resolution.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we, let's see, on parcel, where's it at? On parcel R P P O C two, four, two, zero, 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 I would move that we accept the assessor's request for a tax cancellation for twenty-twenty-two in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. I would also move that we would waive the penalties and interest for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three as this was our fault. And then ask that you pay that today and we'll all be square.
Very good. I appreciate it.
Do we have a motion for the questions?
Nope.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, everybody.
All right. But Josh, you're up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And, Mr. Chair, I have a question for Mr. Ellis before we begin, if that's okay. So, Mr. Ellis, I know that at one point you had hired Ms. Peterson from Racine Olson for the subject matter. I spoke with her. She said she's no longer representing you in that matter. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And are you, is anyone else representing you?
No.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because if you are being represented by an attorney, I'd have to excuse myself.
Oh, sure.
Cause they're not there in person.
I hope we don't have to go that route.
I told him if we was talking litigation, we wasn't having this meeting.
Well, I was, that's why, cause I know that originally, um, she had contacted us.
Yes.
If she was still representing you, I would just.
No, I'll.
Excuse myself so you guys could talk, but I couldn't.
I'd love to have you be here. I'd rather do it this way than the other.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that you're, so you're representing yourself right now.
Representing myself right now, to my own detriment, maybe.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you. It's good to have you there, cause that's, that was one of my first questions.
Is this still considered executive session?
We're not in an executive session.
Can we, that was my request. Can we go into that?
No, it is, it's not scheduled as an executive session.
Okay.
And, uh, so.
That's fine then.
Come on up here. We just don't need to delve into.
That's fine.
A lot of your financials, if that's the desire, but.
Okay.
If it was litigation, you wouldn't be here and we'd be talking to him and then it'd be an executive session.
Okay. No, that, that's fine. I, I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here. My, my intent was to be here much earlier, so. Um, I did present, um, and give copies to Brayden. Have, have you guys all received those copies that I gave to Brayden?
Yes. Did you guys get them electronically?
So knowing your.
So let me just make this simple. Instead of going into all the.
That's what I was asking.
The big details. You come in, you talk to our engineer at a time when things were going in a couple of different directions. What you were told, you followed.
Yes.
And, and now there's been some changes since then.
Yes.
What do you want and what is our concerns? That's, that's, let's make it that simple.
Thank you. That's all I'm after. Knowing the position you're in and knowing that oftentimes counties do have to change course and make different decisions based off of how things are happening. I knew that there were people out there that were threatening litigation against the county that didn't like the way the county was doing things. I'm aware of all of that. So, but I, like you said, I called and said, what will you allow? Because I've been in this position before. I generally try to do everything exactly as is asked. I don't like to have to ask for lots of exceptions. It makes things messy. That, that's generally how I proceed. So we originally met with the county. That's what this one is. Uh, no, there was another one that showed ten lots. So I asked for ten lots originally based off of what I was told. That was this one that you see here. I met with them and they said, hey, you can't have any access off, off of Hawthorne Road. There has to be one road in. So we went from ten immediately down to nine and then we dropped to eight, cause that's what they said. So that's what I tried to do. So I proposed this one and this was what we proposed. We were proposing all of the open space per lot. I finished that. I had been told it would be an eight-week process. We did that because at this time, interest rates were starting to move. I had two buyers on the line, my own personal house. I was trying to get loans in place before interest rates went crazy. That's why I followed that minor land division, because had anybody told me, you need to stop this minor land division and do the subdivision or you're going to be outside of the window, I can't promise you I would have made that decision. Um, I paid way too much for the ground as open space. I paid more money for open space ground than what you would pay for farming ground. So I provided for you the resolution that I'm asking for, which was the very last page on the back, which follows essentially what I had presented to the minor land division and to the county. What you don't see on there is the open space designation per lot. I will make sure that my engineer does that, um, because that was the requirement at the time that you had to do minor land division, open space per lot. It had to be designated. You couldn't build outside of it. I still stick below the lots and now the county would be safe, in my opinion, because the county did see that. They didn't know that that was there, so it would have been heard before the deadline that was made. How did that, I guess that's my question, is how did that transpire that there was a change? And what was the directive given to start telling people this is no longer what we're, does that make sense? Like, at, at some point, you're making a change. What was the directive and how did that happen?
There was interpretations that we didn't agree with, legal counsel didn't agree with. And so we says, okay, this is the direction and this is the deadline. And from here on, this is the criteria. That's, that's what, in a nutshell, that's what happened.
Perfect.
Okay. So what is your concerns in your office right now with this? Any?
Tristan Forkman, Assistant Planning Director. I think really it's just, we're here if you have questions for us regarding what Josh is requesting. We do have some background information on how the process moved forward. If you want any of that information, Elise has that all printed out so we can let you know where it started and how we've gotten to the final plat so far. I think that's really all I have for now.
So where you're at with the final plat and where you're at, is there a big difference in, in, in what you're saying?
Yeah, so what he has submitted for final plat meets the open space requirements. What he wants to submit for final plat would not meet the open space requirements.
The current open space or the, the one that was there before?
The current open space requirements are met under his current final plat submittal, would not be under the one he would like to have submitted.
So, I guess I'm a little confused here.
So I asked when it first started, as we did the minor land division, as soon as I finished that, I immediately went from that into the subdivision process. That's when then in that, in that next meeting, Elise said that there's been a change. You can't do this that way. I asked if I could get in front of the county commissioners and I was informed that no, that was not a possibility. The, the deadline had been set. There were no exceptions that were being made. I already had a contract in my play, in place with my father to buy this ground, so there was no way that I could, there was no way that I could back out of it. So I simply started to move through that process to try to make it, make it work. I asked for the right to reserve the open space to develop it at a future time in my restrictive covenants that if and when the county changed their ordinances, that I would be able to do that. So again, I was like frustrated, but said, okay, I'll, I'll go with this process. I already have a loan in place. I have commitments I have to meet. I wanted to reserve that five acres. It's a little over five acres, five point zero one or five point zero eight, to be able to develop it in a future time.
But that's the open space.
That's the open space. I was told, it was redlined twice on the plan, saying that that could not be done. It was after I went out and sought possible counsel and looked at litigation, because I know of another subdivision that was allowed in the South County that was about the same time. It was coming through and, um, it's the Marley, uh, I'll call it Marley Estates for whatever, for whatever that's worth. That he did the same thing in minor land division and then went right into a subdivision. And the whole question was, when did you have your hearing? And that set the date. So I'm, his approval was done in August of twenty-twenty-three. So that, that's really what set me on this course of saying, okay, I relied on what I was told. I followed it to the best of my ability and then I've been damaged. In fact, there was an additional ten acres of my family's homestead. I mean, this, this piece is the piece I grew up on. I bought this from my dad. There was ten acres. That's now been sold to somebody else on the back end. Because when it changed, it was like, okay, I, we, we can't do this. Great dad, you're gonna have to sell that to somebody else. There's no reason to cross the canal for, you know, one lot on that side. Then I get to the end and I find out that another subdivision is gone. Well, my bank is now saying, Josh, you're under collateralized on this loan. This open space, if you have to put that permanent designation on here, your project is no longer collateralized to the point that we want. So I'm sitting here going, okay, there's gotta be a way. I would have met that deadline. If anybody from the county would have said, Josh, it looks like we're having to make a change for whatever those reasons, and I wouldn't need to know all those reasons. But I feel that somebody at the county should have said, we know we've told you to do this and you're doing this, but it looks like there's a change coming. You have to do something differently or you're gonna get caught in the crosshairs. Then if I don't do that, that's my fault, right? And you can say, Josh, we gave you a warning and you ignored it. You've missed the deadline. I, I, I sure would have. I would have stopped my minor land division and immediately gone to the subdivision process. So I'm, I'm just asking you to look at that, that I was in the pipeline. I did what the county told me to do. And I think that we can provide cover for the liability reasons.
Well, there's, there's one of two things that has to happen here. You either have to meet our current open space requirements or the open space requirements that were present before. One of the two, you gotta meet.
Oh, absolutely.
We won't break the law.
Oh, I'm not asking you to. I'm not asking.
So that's what I, what I'm saying. Does, does his plans meet either one of them criterias?
So it does meet the old interpretation of open space. But his minor land division was recorded in June of twenty-twenty-two. His pre-development was not submitted until June of twenty-twenty-two. And the deadline for the open space requirement was April twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. And a concept had to be submitted, which is why Marley Acres was able to move forward because he had a concept submitted prior to April twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. And every subdivision that has had a concept submitted has been able to move forward under that old interpretation of open space.
So is that the solution? Is we need the concept plan to, under the old open space to move forward?
So I think that's up to you, because at this point, we don't have a concept plan that would meet that original deadline.
This was the concept plan that we presented in that minor land division. And what happened afterwards, the only changes that were made to this was because I was told that it had to change. This road was always supposed to bend, cross the canal. And so we submitted per open space to the county, a rendition that shows that it met your old ordinance. The only difference is now the, the one that we would be doing would be a little different because I no longer have the road that will cross the canal. I've put in a cul-de-sac. It, it's standalone. It, I feel that it, I feel that it meets the, the criteria that you're looking for. Because again, if I'd have known that I had to meet that deadline, you would have had this preliminary subdivision in time without.
And, and I agree with that. If he was working, there should have been some communication about this deadline. But we, we don't contact everybody every time we make a change on anything that goes on in the county. I mean, so I'm weighing both sides, that.
No, I, and I get, I, I would hope that you would, or I would hope that staff would say, okay, we're, these are the people that we're working with. Like, I don't think you have to reach out to everybody and say, hey, we're making a change. But if you have people that you're, you're working with that are in there, that, that have relied on things that you've told them to do, at least those folks, I would hope that that's who you would contact. Cause I agree. If I show up in, in, let's say, July, the very first time, even if I know that my buddy did it, I can show up in July and you can say, this is the new rule. I mean, I've got someone that's developing or has actually counted, contacted the county. He wants to develop a piece that's off of Siphon Road. And he's asking me and I'm saying, these are the new requirements. I'm telling him, you, you have to have an open space lot and it's fifty percent. I, I get that. I, I mean, I have people calling me and I'm telling them, that's the ordinance, so you, you gotta meet it.
The last of the stuff from that time period?
Um, Elise Foster, a subdivision planner. There are several people that we have talked to that have minor land divisions. Through the process, there are people that we have been speaking to for five years about potentially subdividing.
Right, but I'm talking about that specific time period in question that people started. And I, I remember when we were in that time period, we had a group of, I want to say ten to twelve, that were in this type of process, that we were in flux, because we were trying to change things. So I'm asking specifically about that ten or whatever it was.
Off the top of my head, I do not know the answer to that. I know Josh is probably one of the main ones, but there potentially could be more.
Yeah, I would guess that there are several, at least a handful of others who started the minor land division process with the intent to then further plat and subdivide later, who will now have to also adhere to the new.
Was they at this point?
Requirements.
Had they submitted their plats, their, their conception plans, or had they done any of that stuff?
No.
Okay, so.
But Josh had it either.
We're not talking exactly the same. We're not talking exactly the same.
Josh, would, would it cause you any more stress if we kind of waited just a few more days to make a decision to get a little bit more information on a couple of things?
No.
Okay, I would, I would ask that we have maybe bring this back up next Tuesday or Thursday, whenever we can put on the schedule. There's a couple of other questions I would like to ask before we give you an answer.
What other questions do you have for me? I mean, you can grill me on timeline, intent?
It's not for you. It's, I'm, I'm okay with where you're at. It's just a couple of other things that I want to clarify before we go too much further.
Well, I, and I'd say, let's put this on Tuesday, as an action item, and that's when a decision will be made.
I'm available for any other... If you need anything between now and then, as, as questions come up. And I understand the timeframe and the concern, and you don't want necessarily open Pandora's box for ten other people. The emails here show that even as we were doing this, we were communicating with staff that said we want to do it, like, it was always to go from one to the other. There was never going to be a long drawn out, and, which, again, the ten acres, can that be the concession that the ten acres, the, the other ten acres that I would have developed is gone, it's been sold, I mean, I...
How many lot, with this, with what you're asking for now, you get, what, nine lots?
Eight.
You get eight lots, okay.
Right now, I had there six that would be on the final plat.
But if, but if we said, yeah, we're going to do what you ask, it would be eight lots?
Eight, and that would be less than the ten that I originally was trying to get on that front house. So, I'm trying to be workable.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That's what I would ask for, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let's put that on our agenda for Tuesday, if you have Brayden here.
And Josh, you've provided us with enough information, so I don't, I don't have any more questions about your case in particular.
Okay, well, if you do, I'm available. You can call me, text me, email me, or have Brayden, I'll make myself available for whatever you need.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time. Thank you, ladies.
All right. Looks like we have a signature on a public hearing for Tuesday, January twenty-third. And this is... Planet Development, Change O.
I'll catch you after.
Motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we authorize the public hearing notice.
Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.